Pat McKee.
Here.
Cody Nicolai.
Joanna Reyes.
Here.
Lance Trelle.
Here.
Karen Vandenberg.
Here.
Lee Webster.
Here.
Jim Boucher.
Here. At this time, if we could stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. It is the mission of the Wausau School District to advance student learning, achievement, and success. And with that, I would like to recognize speakers and students who wish to make a public comment. I will take just a minute to state the comments I always state, Mr. Sillers, before you take off. The Board recognizes the value of a public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on district matters. Please identify yourself by name, state your address. Each statement made by a participant shall be limited to three minutes. And Ms. Peck to your left will identify time left. Speakers shall direct all comments to the Board and not to other staff or other participants. And with that, I'll just end that comment.
Corey Sillers, 226-961-CROSSBILL-AVE, RED MOUNTAIN. I have a student that will be a sophomore next year at Wausau West. Good evening, Board members, staff, and families. According to initial design and construction timeline presented to this Board, at the May 23 Committee meeting, the turf design phase will begin this September, with installation planned for May through October of 2023. I come here tonight to express in very strong terms not to mess this portion of the project up. Since I do not wish to misspeak on behalf of the other sports families I have interacted with recently, I will state simply that I personally would expect that every current coach would get to have input into how the fields at both high schools get upgraded. In addition, the coaches should really be having conversations with their players and the parents to gain additional insight for the new fields and to pass on all of that information to the design team. I believe the sport families must have a buy-in to these projects. Each sport family basically spends hundreds of additional dollars on their athletes each season in fees and fundraisers and new equipment. We will expect that these upgrades ultimately raise the visibility of the Wausau area and create a new opportunity for local businesses to support our sport programs. The idea that this district is behind the surrounding districts in regards to the sports facilities for our student athletes has been brought up in the past. So these upgrades really do need to be done correctly. Finally, as a supervisor for the town of Red Mountain, I have had general discussions with my residents in that area about the fields and the turf and how the referendum turned out. And a few of them would definitely be open to the idea of taking all of our referendum money and, as an example, taking Tom Field and enhancing the football field and track facilities there. And in addition, adding two baseball fields to make a truly combined varsity-level facility for the entire district instead of continuing to have the split facilities for each high school. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sillers. Appreciate that. The approval of consent agenda, before we do this, I'm going to recognize the donators. It'll take some time to do that. Maine Lions Club, Sarah Seawall, Wisconsin High School Football Coaches Association, the Associated Bank, Glazer Dental, and Wausau West Football Boosters. So I am seeking a motion to approve the consent agenda with great gratitude for the donations to the district.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item number seven, Agenda Item Number Seven, Share Preliminary Design Plans for Hawthorne Hills Environmental Learning Center. As a referendum-funded improvement plan develops, for each facility, the Board will see updates when the designs reach 50% completion. Current plans for Hawthorne Hills Elementary and the School Forest Environment Learning Center will be shared with the Board tonight. And with that, Mr. Cass, I'll pass it to you.
Thank you. Once again, with Larry Siller. With Larry Siller is Sharon Gould from Nexus. You've seen her before when we talked about something that looks a lot like what we're going to do tonight. Although, the last time we talked about Hawthorne Hills, we talked a little bit more about the collaboration with the city in building a road that was going to connect with Washington Street. This is a true 50% design reveal. So with that, I'm going to turn this portion over to Sharon to talk about the 50% design for Hawthorne Hills. And then we get to a little bit more exciting portion of the meeting where I'm going to invite some other guests up here to talk about the environmental learning center reveal. So with that, Sharon?
Thank you. Once again, my name is Sharon Gould. I am the Program Manager for Nexus Solutions, and I oversee the design process for the referendum project moving forward. So with that, here I'm to present the Hawthorne Hills update as it compares to the existing referendum package and how it might have evolved since then. So with that, here's the referendum drawing. We saw it last time, it hasn't changed. But just for reference on where we start, you can see the road comes through here, there's a drop-off. Most of the work is on site, and we'll just walk through how that looks moving forward. So the district involvement to date with the Hawthorne project has been the district leadership team and the Building Design Committee, which includes the principal and maintenance. We've also had district support for the transition of the principals to make sure that we have involvement as the principals change to help with the scope of the project. We've also had two municipal meetings with the City of Wausau to make sure that we're understanding what their needs are for the road and making sure that we're following their direction to make this process smooth. We do have an update meeting this Thursday to start the road approval process. So we're getting ready for that. So with that, I just want to show you an updated design. So you saw the semittel from last time, and this one's a little bit more clear because we're a little bit more farther along. So if you look at the drawing, you can see here this is the new road that we're putting in that connects Kick Bush Street to Washington Street. And this green area alongside of the road is where we have to clear out the site. It's very topographically challenging, a lot of steep hills and things like that. And so we're getting ready to essentially clear the site so we can start doing underground testing to make sure the road conditions are appropriate, the soil conditions are appropriate for the road. Other things to note on the site is you can see that we've added in parking on the east end of the site. It's essentially double the existing parking count that we've had before. So that's, you know, pretty good news. And then we've also relooked at this bus drop-off to flatten the swing of the buses because it was really tight and dangerous before. And so we've taken a look at, you know, bus design to make sure that we can update that a little bit to make it safe for the parents and the kids and the staff that might be around those buses.
Just to interrupt real quickly, it was unsafe for buses, so that's why buses weren't there. Buses were in the other area. We're going to bring the buses back to that west location after we make it safer, just to be clear.
The other thing that we're developing right now is the stormwater plan. So that's part of DNR and making sure that that's dealt with in the runoff for the hills. So you might see some more changes that coming throughout the 95%, but we're pretty stable here. So I just have an example, too, of the actual CAD drawings for the site, just so you can see the amount of work that's starting to go into that. Any questions on the road?
Again, with the road, sorry, interrupt again with the road. As the city's agenda and timeline unfolds, if it aligns perfectly with our Board, and I can get approval from you directly to the Board, we'll do that. If the approval at the city needs approval from you through me, then I'll ask you to give me or give authority to give the approval to the city. It'll all depend on how those things line up with our views.
All right, so inside the building, we don't have an extensive scope of work here, but I just wanted to point out certain areas. There's two different shades of orange. You have a light orange and a darker orange. The lighter orange indicates all the ADA upgrades that we're doing throughout the building. We're looking at replacing non-ADA handrails with ADA handrails on the stairs. We're looking at adding additional grab bars into the various toilet rooms throughout the building. And we're also looking at removing and replacing non-ADA compliant cubbies so all students have access to an ADA cubby and also it's safe in the corridors. As a 50% design review, we're also just getting started on the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing systems. Probably a big thing is we're looking to locate the generator just with the hillwork that's going on around the school. That's a little bit of a challenge to do. But we want to be thoughtful for any future additions that we're being cognizant of any decisions that we make today and how they might affect the future. So the generator location is definitely something that we're considering. So with a secure front entry, we're looking forward to, you know, getting feedback from the security consultant. We feel like we're fairly close with our design, but we do believe the security consultant might have some things that we would want to add to this. So we'll take this design as far as reasonable, and then that consultant can give us, you know, a couple items to make sure that we're headed down the path that they suggest. So that's actually it for Hawthorne. It's pretty straightforward. The challenge is the road, so we've been focused most of our energy on that road design. So with that, I'd like to introduce the school forest project.
Any questions? I'll first of all, okay. Larry and I are going to give up our seats here. We'll be right behind you. And I'm going to introduce a couple other folks. One you know quite well, Chris Nelson, our Director of the School Forest and Malley Farm and Architect with Somerville. So they know a little bit more about the specifics of the design and they could share some of that excitement that we've been going through.
So this is the, well, okay, new road design is really fun, but this is even more fun. So we just wanted to help generate excitement on this new building that we're working on. So we're looking at the school forest today. The referendum scope of work included a new environmental center and also some maintenance and infrastructure and life safety items as well. But the main point of our conversation today is to go through what we're doing with the new environmental center. So with that, I just wanted to point out, we've had five design meetings, so it's been, you know, exciting to be able to get to where we are today. We've had the district leadership team and the Building Design Committee, which includes Chris and some of the other staff on site. We've also had a couple follow-up concept meetings to, like, bet out different ideas and make sure that we're presenting the best ideas back. And so that's also been with the district leadership team and the Building Design Committee and the design team to, you know, have a collaborative effort going through. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Chris to talk through the vision of the Environmental Learning Center.
Sure, yeah. So this new vision here, this would be the front facing as you come into the school forest. And if you guys remember many years ago when we kind of started this vision, we kind of had a different design process. And we looked at that and we looked at this. I visited some centers around the state just to try to brainstorm some ideas knowing that what we were going to do here. And this seemed kind of an exciting, fun idea to build it bigger and more open inside rather than the previous design we had. So we kind of all looked at it, and there was a pretty good consensus that liked this concept. And then we started building onto this concept. So I know this is new for a lot of you, but that's really where this came about. Any questions on the outside? This is the front here.
Front and back.
Front and back. I think it's on the next slide.
So do you have anything?
Yeah, so I guess as we look to the exterior, a couple comments I can make. The image on my right, here is the front door. You can see this would be your entrance, which would be entrance into your vestibule. This would be the, you know, forest parking lot side, right? You enter into vestibule with a mudroom and then, I think, do we have the plan here as well?
Yeah, that's good.
Okay, so we'll look at that. But you can see here that you've got view into the classroom windows, right? Lots of nice window for daylighting as well as capturing that exterior vision. And you can see as we move around the front, a lot of glass out towards the water view as well, taking certain advantage of that. But also looking at the materials of the building, making sure that we're both designing out of durable materials from a longevity perspective, but also something that is going to, you know, blend and match in with that natural aspect, right, of being an environmental learning center. So whether those are durable materials of stone or burnished block, also I'm looking at a metal panel, but maybe a wood look metal panel again. So we're making that tie with nature, but with a durable product. And then where we are using natural wood materials, we'll use them, you know, with columns or on the interior exposed glue lamp beams or other details. So again, looking at that maintenance piece. And then the other renderings here from the, again, that water side. So we've got even more windows as we're looking out, taking advantage of that view and then capturing the nature there and lots of natural light into the building. And then that main center core is that museum space. And then the wings being the classroom wings, and you can see that in the plan as well.
So Chris, if you want to... Sure, yeah. So as you come in, so the northern side of the building, I guess closest to the parking lot would be the top on what we're looking at here. So you come in the vestibule, we kind of switched it around so you wouldn't have to, like, walk through the code area. So anybody that enters can kind of make a quick turn there. And then we kind of have a small lobby area with a staircase that does go up to a mezzanine space that we can utilize upstairs. That'll be the only upper level in this building. But in that lobby area, you know, there's going to be some things like, one thing I want to do is kind of get a little history display of what the school forest is, how it started, so that doesn't get lost. And I want it to be more of a, you know, well-done, professionally-done display of what the red lodge is there and how the school forest in general started so that when people come in, they can sit and see and figure out how that happened. And then as you progress in through there, we have our bathrooms, health room on the left, and universal bathroom on the right. And then that big great room area is kind of what you're seeing from the glass overlooking the river there. And that's going to have big beams coming out of the floor. That's what all those little squares are on the sides. And a fireplace down in the bottom corner with lots of glass and lots of natural light coming in there. At some point in time, that's a space where I want to put some displays that we can use to educate the students. Still kind of working out where those are going to be in this display. Then on the left side, which would be the west side of the building, there's going to be two separate classroom spaces, those two right there. I mean, one's his classroom, one's in the science lab, but they're both going to be utilized in those classroom spaces. There's going to be a little office corner as you go into that classroom. We've never really had a solid office at the school forest. The kitchen's kind of the office. So we usually get a little wooden mailbox, and we stand around our cook's computer and call that our office. So this will be the first out there, which will be kind of fun. And then the other corner, a little kitchenette area so that, you know, if other groups come in and they don't have to use the commercial kitchen, they can use that to cook stuff, store stuff in a refrigerator. We'll have that loaded for that. And then on the right side, which would be the east side of the building there, that's going to be more of a big, open classroom. Instead of having two, we kind of thought it through in what we teach and how we teach and what we do with students. And thought it'd be better to have a bigger space for the big groups that are in there. So we're going to leave that one actually open as more of like a lecture-style classroom hall for big groups. A door going out, so when we do our deer dissections, our deer necropsies, we can bring deer in from the utility building so we don't have to walk them right through the middle of the building. And as we thought about things, because we thought about this a lot, that just seemed to be the best use of the space. So, you know, there's definitely going to be tweaks and changes here, but for the most part, this is kind of what we've kind of looked at and settled on. Anything I'm missing here?
Sounds pretty good. We also have the mezzanine in the lower level, just to show how they overlap. We did have the opportunity for potential donors coming in, so that might affect some of the mezzanine decoration. I don't want to say decorations, that's not the right word. The mezzanine displays and the, so there's some really cool ideas that we're exploring with that potential. And also, we're looking at having a secure, or not, a safe space for students to go during implement weather and things like that. So that's where the main driver for the basement would be, is to just allow, you know, during a bad day like today, that they have somewhere to go and be safe. So...
Yeah, just some commentary on that lower level. So as we were looking at the design, you know, making smart decisions as we're adding a mezzanine and a lower level to the building, certainly code requirements, whether they be sprinkling or adding an elevator, looking at how we can make smart decisions so that we can make the best use from a funding perspective. So from a mezzanine perspective, how we use that and the size of that then dictates whether we need an elevator or not. And then also, that lower level will not be connected to that main level that we were just talking about with the museum space and the classrooms, right? That lower level would be accessible, so we would have an accessible ramp at the exterior, and there would just be exterior access at that lower level that is mainly used for mechanical storage and then that, you know, as needed for implement weather. So certainly being thoughtful there, you know, some other things that are drivers there, you know, that needs to just maintain one large room. So that lower level is just, you know, one room, no dividers in there. Again, as we look at, you know, coding implications of that lower level.
So code-wise, it's fairly complex, and I think we have a fairly simple solution that addressed the complexity of the codes that are driving a lot of this. So that's pretty, I'm pretty excited about that. So the last piece of this is the site plan. So this is where the building's sighting. You can see the rivers off in this area. And so it was kind of a bit of a challenge to locate the building outside of the floodplains and the setbacks required off of the Wisconsin River. But we got it, and we have the building, even with the basement, it's higher than the floodplain by a couple feet, so we're safe there. And just working with DNR and other requirements, you know, that's where it's going. We also wanted to enhance the views out of the building to make sure that the students in the classrooms could see the river. I mean, it's a fantastic location, so we wanted to make sure that we capitalized on that opportunity. We do have a bit of a connection going to the road here where the students are going to get dropped off at the gravel parking lot from the buses here. So there's access. We're connecting other walking paths throughout, and we're still working through some of the other exterior requirements, you know, paths. There's, you know, grade changes, so it might be a challenge to get some ADA paths between the different buildings. But we're working really hard to make sure that it's accessible for everybody and that there's good access, you know, to the river, to the buses, to the students coming in. We're pretty excited about this. This is really a great opportunity. And we are trying to, again, plan for future, you know, if there's donors out there that might be interested in contributing here and there, we want to make sure that we're not impeding any of those opportunities for the donors to come in and continue to make this a really fantastic space. So any other comments?
No, I think that's great.
Questions?
I have a question. With all the other buildings, we've been so concerned about safety and security. And I don't, we haven't referenced that in regard to this. Can you comment about that?
So the question has come up here as well. And so this is a different site with different requirements. It's already a gated community with card access. And this also will be a site where we're looking forward to the security consultant to have comments and feedback. But it's also a different type of situation, too, where there might not be a person at a front desk allowing people in and out. And so we are brainstorming through an adequate solution. I don't have a 100% solution for you today, but it is something that's come up, and we want to take it seriously because we're taking all the school buildings, all the educational facilities in this project seriously. So like I said, I don't have a final or a good solution yet, but we really look forward to hearing what the consultant has to say, also noting that it's a more secure site than some of the other ones because not just anyone can come in. It has different rules, so we're working through that.
They're on our list. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the Board? Well, thank you for your presentation. Appreciate that.
You're welcome.
We may look stoic, but we are really stoked about this. This is pretty exciting stuff. Moving on, moving on to Agenda Number Eight. Ms. Wendy Cartwright is going to give us a presentation on the student engagement. With help.
Yes. Okay, good evening, happy Monday. So this will be a short presentation on our Short Cycle Report, which should be Wellness Goal One. Do I say slide? So the SMART Goal Wellness One. By the end of the 2023 school year, increase student engagement through an expanded and strategic use of developmentally-appropriate continuum of services as evidenced by a 3% decrease per year of in-school and out-of-school suspensions. So this chart reflects our data. So we have our data from 2018-19 all the way up until this past year with the kind of two weird years in there. So I believe this goal would have been created in 2018-19. So looking at where we started, kind of where we were, and here we are now. We had the normal year pandemic and kind of the full-on extremely structured environment. And then we were all rebounding this past year. Slide. And so with that came a 23% drop in in-schools and out-of-school suspensions district-wide from 2018-19 to the present. We would like to continue that drop into the 22-23 school year or continue that downward trend. So thinking about that information, it doesn't necessarily feel like that's how the year went, just in thinking that's a pretty significant drop. And it was an incredible comeback for everyone in the district. So we think we kept moving during this past year with a few key differences from previous years. We had the Leader in Me Core One implementation. So that was implemented district-wide and included building lighthouse teams. We had a focus on student engagement and leadership. And then we also had increased building supports through bridge rooms and through all of our pupil services staff addition. So I'm going to hand it over to Mark to talk a little bit about that Leader in Me implementation and where we're at and where we're going. So we'll take it away, Mark.
So, oh, one back, that was wrong, they look so much alike. We started Leader in Me this year. It was the first year of implementation, even though it's been in planning for quite some time. We had two full staff days, August 30 and 31, to support our staff and get them focused on Core One. The goal of Core One was first, understanding and modeling the seven habits of highly effective people. And then the second one, building and maintaining positive relationships, which is a, I mean, obviously, it's embedded in the seven habits, but it takes a little bit extra focus to understand where you're going with that. To support our staff, in addition to having that initial training, we had the district teams, or, no, sorry, the district teams, the Leader in Me teams came in every single month and worked with the individual buildings. So every building had a Leader in Me coach that worked them through some of the different things that had to happen at the different months to support the implementation. In addition to that, the district hosted all the lighthouse teams. The lighthouse team is comprised of staff members in their buildings who decided they wanted to be a leader for Leader in Me. So we're talking one to three, one to three staff members who volunteered and didn't volunteer, who came in with their time and were supported. We meant monthly, just to kind of talk through the nuances of what we had to do to actually make this a successful implementation. To that success, we had our two goals, empowering all learners and student engagement and leadership. And you can see the growth from 2021 to 2022. It was about a 10% growth in both areas. This was rather significant. Even Leader in Me came back and told us significantly that it changed a lot from where we were. And they don't always see that change in year one. Oftentimes, the true growth comes in the post-years because that first year is just understanding what's going on.
So moving forward to the future, we're going to continue that Leader in Me coaching and that PBIS capacity. We are going to increase the number of Leader in Me coaches to kind of help enhance our lighthouse teams and PBIS coaches in each building to kind of work together as a team. We're going to continue to work with bridge room coordinators to build their capacity, reinvest in our pupil services staff with the Get Kids Ahead funding. I don't know if any of you recall, Dr. Hilton, a big giant check was probably in May. We received about $117,000 from the Get Kids Ahead funding. And then we'll all be participating in Leader in Me Core Two training August 30, right before school gets started. And then we're going to maintain a case of accountability through those monthly lighthouse meetings, both in the buildings and then district-wide. And then continuing to look at our district data.
Questions from the Board?
Not really a question, just sort of my annual concern that I admit I haven't come up with a solution for yet. But I'm always concerned whenever we measure success by how we respond. So in other words, suspensions, or sometimes in elementary schools, they do it with behavioral... do it with behavioral referrals, don't ever want it to be a situation where the staff thinks like they need to change what qualifies for suspension. So we have less suspensions. Or a principal thinks the way our elementary school looks good is by reducing the number of referrals. So teachers quit referring students down to my office. Because I could see a situation where the behavior improved so much that what qualifies for a suspension is actually not as severe as it was maybe years ago. So your suspensions don't go down, but yet the behavior has actually improved. So that's my concern. I always say when we have this and yet fully admit I don't have a better way to measure it. So I don't know what the answer to it is. It's just always a concern that I have.
Yes. Just chairs for you.
I agree with that. One of the things and one of the sides that we had was the student engagement portion of it, which is a student self-assessment. I think that's important because that means the students are seeing improvements in those areas as well to develop the culture that way. So I wonder going forward if that's a bigger measurement for us than the punishment side or the discipline side?
Yeah, and staff, staff assessment as well of what the behavior, it's, it's not as solid. You can't, you know, because there's so much, there's so much leeway there in how you answer that survey. And in fact, what you think is problematic one year might, you might not have thought it was much of a problem the year before or vice versa. So that, I understand that using suspensions or using behavior referrals is something that you can just sort of, there are numbers, you can count them, you can compare them the year before. And it's always worry that that's sort of an incentive to not penalize the negative behavior.
Good point. Good point. Other questions?
Just a couple quick ones, I think. On slide four, where you have the outcomes data from 1819 through 2122, have, have these been adjusted for the decrease in enrollment? These are just the raw numbers, right?
Raw numbers out of education.
So what, what has the enrollment decrease been? Do we know from 18 till this, just till this year? Because that would come off the top of whatever that 23% looks like?
I don't have that information, but we can keep that information.
And I can speak analogically from the high school level that it's, it's a slight decrease, but not a significant decrease. So it was, he sort of went from roughly 1,000 to about 170.
Okay. That's good. All right. And then the second was the, oh, let's see, the empowering all learners and student engagement and chip. How are those, like, what are those two specifically measuring? The 60% means what?
So at the end of the year, student staff and families take what's called the, thank you, the MRA assessment. John blanked for a second. I did upstairs too and thinking about it. The MRA assessment is run by leader in me. So it's completely third party. It encompasses all the aspects of what leader in me is. So we have the data on all the aspects. We chose in these two, these are the two subsets that we focused on in core one. So we have baseline data for everything, but we're getting feedback specifically to our core one results. The empowering all learners is about student ownership. It's about believing, making, getting students to believe that they can succeed. It goes to the aspects of what we focused on in core one. The student engagement leadership is a separate measurement that this year was based off of things like what level, how do students feel about their, their own engagement? Do families feel engaged in the school, empowered to do stuff in the school? Do staff feel like they have a say in what happens in the school? All those different components come into play.
And I think that answered many of your questions. So that's an umbrella. And then there's a battery of questions that follow this. So it's not just a one question survey. There's 20 questions that are included underneath.
Build up to an index of whatever it is. Okay. Great. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have one question. When you said you're looking to increase the leader in me coaches and the PBIS coaches, are those typically filled by in-building teachers? That's who's typically doing that? Okay. And so every building, I think you had shared, has at least one coach for each of those?
Every building has one this year.
Okay.
Next year, every building will have three.
Oh, great. Okay. So there's more of a team approach with it?
Yeah, much more.
That was my only question. Thanks.
I'm going to piggyback off of that one and ask the question. You probably don't have this, but HR probably does. When it comes to the payment, supplemental payment for, for these PBIS coaches, because this is something they're doing over and above their classroom. And if we're expecting them to do that within the confines of their day and getting things done in the classroom and then with other teachers, that's a big demand. Are we paying well?
We've increased.
You don't have to tell me what. I'm just saying, are we paying well? Okay. Because I am always concerned about that. And that's an extra duty. That's not within the confines of lesson planning, unit creation, things of that fashion. So I'm, good. That's good to hear that. Thank you. Any other questions? If not, thank you. Agenda item nine, old and recurring businesses, business. USDA paid, this was given to us at our last meeting, when it comes to lunches, paid lunch equity tool was used to determine the new weighted pricing average for the 2022, 23 school year. This weighted average is used as the guide for the WSD Nutrition Services Department to update meal pricing for the upcoming 2223 school year. In addition, the Wisconsin Adult Meal Price calculation guidelines provided by the DPI was used to update the adult meal pricing utilizing the pricing School Food Authority. That was all given to us last, at our last meeting. Item two under agenda item nine, Activities Code of Conduct. At the June Education Operations Committee meeting, Dr. Jennifer Roosher presented the 2223 Wausau School District Activities Code of Conduct, which will be used at East and West. It's consistent rather having it different from one school to the other school, which is something that you had worked on throughout the year because of the board had talked about that earlier. So that is taken care of. But I am seeking a motion to approve the WSD Athletic and Activities Code of Conduct as presented at that time. So moved.
Mr. Duncan?
Any questions? Any follow-up questions? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion so carries. Number three, Annual Academic Standards. At the June Education Operations Committee meeting, the education team presented the 2223 District Academic Standards in Math, English, Science, and Social Studies, according to the DPI. I'm seeking a motion to approve the 2223 District Academic Standards in Math, English Language Arts, Science, and Social Studies.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Any follow-up questions? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion so carries. New business, Education Operations Committee meeting. At the June Education Operations Committee meeting, Dr. Hiltz shared a summary of the current safety and security efforts. And at this time, Mr. Tess, you will speak on behalf.
Sure. This typically would come up at the board level and we wouldn't talk too much about it. Some has developed since we talked two weeks ago. Larry Seiler, Dr. Hiltz, Kale Bushman and myself have developed the RFP. We made it available to 11 firms. I believe one of them immediately declined. The rest of them are probably reading it through right now and deciding whether they want to respond. So we think out of 10 firms, we're going to get some pretty good results coming back to us. I believe they're due at the end of July, July 29th.
29th, yeah.
So July 29th, we'll really look through them in a little bit more detail. And it's not a real specific RFP where we ask for exactly this. We're asking what their firm could do for us in response to a challenge. That challenge being we want to improve safety and security throughout our district and improve not only the facilities and the layout, but the procedures and the behavior of the people inhabiting them and all of that stuff. So we're going to take a look at what we get July 29th and we'll go from there and you will certainly hear an update from us. Other than that, we have nothing else to share.
Any questions at this time from the board? If not, thank you. I appreciate that. Mr. Tess. Agenda item 10, New Business, number two, the design plans for Satine Elementary and Review Elementary. As referendum funded improvement plans develop for each facility, the board will see updates when the designs reach 50% completion. Current plans for Satine and Review Elementary schools were shared at the June Education Operations Committee meeting.
Sure. With this one, it's just procedural. Some of these things that show up at the Ed Ops meeting, you will see twice, right? And the second time, we won't talk much about them. We'll answer any questions that you might have. The others that show up for the first time at the board meeting, like the Environmental Learning Center and Author, and you will only see once because you won't see it on the next board meeting, right? So these are examples of ones that we've seen before, two days, two weeks ago. So it'll show up on the agenda. We're going to have to get used to seeing them. And maybe if you have questions, there's a second opportunity. But other than that, there's nothing that has changed for these next two agenda items.
Okay. Moving on. Share preliminary site plan for Hawthorne Hills. I have a long dissertation here to read, but I think we've cut through that with a little presentation before. I don't think I have to read this through. So you want to follow up and keep on moving?
Sure.
Okay.
Sure. Are we on the AIA contract on?
Plan for Hawthorne Hills.
Okay. Plan for Hawthorne Hills. Again, similar to the previous one, you'll probably hear from us based on the needs of the city's timeline, when they need certain approvals for developer agreements and other approvals for us to give them the land that the road sits on, so to speak. And as that timeline unfolds, we'll come back to you and we might ask you to sign something or we might ask you to give Keith or myself the authority to sign it. So that's it for that one.
Things I take it are working well with the city when it comes to this road because that's a pretty major situation, adding a road to the community. And obviously, it's better for us because we need it and for safety and security purposes. So things are moving smoothly at this point in time.
Excuse me. Absolutely. We've also engaged with police department, fire department, other municipality, other municipal entities within the city for their input. And obviously, most of them are very supportive as well.
Okay. Good. Thank you. Item number four under New Business 10. As the design process for referendum funded projects continue to develop, it is necessary to execute a pair of AIA, American Institute of Architects, contracts between the district and Nexus Solutions to define the work and clearly delineate all the responsibilities. The administration has engaged legal counsel to assist in the review and development of all AIA design and construction management contracts between the district and Nexus Solutions. That work has concluded and the administration seeks board approval on AIA contracts with Nexus Solutions. So at this time, I'm seeking a motion to approve all AIA contracts with Nexus Solutions for design and construction management services for referendum related work.
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay. Questions?
Just one. So district council has already reviewed this. Has Nexus has already reviewed this as well? So it's, it's reached a point where the two sides are in agreement on it?
Yep.
Okay.
Any other questions? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion so carries. Contract policy. The June, at the June Education Operations Committee meeting, the committee discussed the need to create a policy for contract approval. Administration will continue working on the development of such a policy. Any follow-up on that?
That's exactly it. We're working on development. Dr. Hiltz gathered a few mostly Neola built policies from different districts. And we're going to continue that work and hopefully have something for you in, I guess, August, it could be 3rd, 9th is the next time we need him. So that's what we're having that one.
All right. Good. Any other questions that board members might have? If not, continuing on. Number six, class evacuation policy. At the June Education Operations Committee meeting, the committee discussed if they felt there was a need to create a policy of this topic. Any questions or comments at this point in time from the board? None? Okay. We'll continue on. Number seven, weighted grades and/or LAUDI system exploration. Dr. Jennifer Roosher shared background information related to weighted grades and LAUDI system in response to questions raised at the last board meeting. After discussion, administration was directed to convene a committee of stakeholders to review data, explore perceptions, and recommend what future action will be pursued. Any questions from the board or any follow-up with Dr. Roosher? Nothing? And if not, anything here? We'll continue on to agenda item number 11. Any board member professional growth and development reports to give to the board today? None? I will move on to the next item B, Legislative Lausanne. Mr. Webster?
Thank you. As we said last time, the legislature is not in session. So most of the, many of the legislators are back in their home districts campaigning for the, for election. One significant change that has taken place in that regard is that Kevin Nicholson has withdrawn from his candidacy as a Republican candidate to, to run against Governor Evers. Probably more significant things have been coming out of Washington, DC. And probably the biggest one was that there was a bipartisan bill for school and gun safety that was passed at the end of, at the end of last month. And the thing that's significant for that, for us and for schools is that it does focus on providing programs to shore up the kind of security, the things that we're already looking at. But nevertheless, that's going to be part of that bill. And there's also going to be an emphasis on more in mental health services. So that's a trend that seems to be taking place nationally. And it will impact us, I believe, at some point down the road. That's all I have for tonight.
Superintendent usually gives a commentary at this time. Mr. Tess, was there any comment that he left? No, he's enjoying his trip.
Enjoying one, Tom. I'll see you.
From me, I have just a comment to be made pertaining to the Wisconsin Association of School Boards. Being the Region Five Director, we had a meeting in June, June 10th and 11th in Madison pertaining to a lot of things going on around the state of Wisconsin. But the major portion of one of the meetings was for about two hours with a discussion and debate pertaining to whether Wisconsin Association of School Boards were going to leave the National School Board Association. And after a long discussion and good debate, it was a very good debate. And I participated in that debate and discussion quite vehemently as well pertaining to what and how are we going to move forward if we leave the NASB or National Association of School Boards? And that was the big discussion. Do we leave a door open to reevaluate what NSBA is doing and going to be doing because of the fact that the Wisconsin Association of School Boards has representation and wants to continue representation in Washington, DC? And not being affiliated with NASB, that becomes somewhat a problem for some states, but Wisconsin is in a good situation. We have good communication with Washington, according to what I'm hearing from the leadership of the Wisconsin Association of School Board. And with that being stated, it was a unanimous vote to leave the NASB at that time after the discussion all took place. Also, leaving a door open, we have left for the 2223 school year and will reevaluate down the road after a year to see where the NASB is going to be and also to see where the new affiliation association will be down the road. They're still playing with the acronym, so I'm not going to kill an acronym here. But there are, I would say, and I won't give a specific number, but over half of the state associations have left the NASB. And just so that you're aware of this, and I think everyone here received a letter from John Ashley explaining the situation was a very difficult time, but Ashley explaining the situation. It was a very difficult time, but yet he would like everybody to know, we, as an association, did not leave based on one item, but several items that have taken place throughout the last several years with NASB. And so this is not purely a one-issue situation. And he wanted to make sure that everybody is hearing that message, that we're moving away right now to reevaluate. And so our affiliation with NASB ended on June 30th. So we are no longer affiliated at this point in time. Any questions about that? So I would also like to have any of our, the report, the Lausanne District Report added to the records.
Actually, I checked the report today, and there were no submissions for this month.
There were none. Okay, well, then we don't have to add that at this point in time. With that, I would, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion so moved.